Mr. President, I think our recording has started and our audio is functioning.
All right. Would we ask those that's viewing the Zoom meeting to please mute your audio until you are asked to have comments or whatever from there? All right, we'll open this special emergency meeting of the county commission to consider revised and recommendations for, from the prosecuting attorney to access to voting locations regarding masks or face covering and/or temperature readings. We are now open for discussion and for consideration. And let me yield to the commissioners first unless you want something from staff, but David and Patsy.
You may want to get the recommendation on the floor from the prosecuting attorney. I know we had a meeting before, administrative meeting and legal counsel to provide agenda topics for this meeting, for the emergency special meeting of the commission. So it would be appropriate to have the revised, or if there is a revised recommendation from the prosecuting attorney, I understand there is, on access to voting locations and masks and face coverings and temperature readings.
All right, Ms. Prosecutor, if you don't, we'll yield to you, Rachel, and you can set the stage for us.
Thank you all. In that vein, I stand behind my legal assertion from Tuesday. However, that legal assertion is an unknown outcome. Do I believe, given my reading of rather novel, no pun intended, case law, that it could be upheld? Sure, I do. However, I don't think that that is a chance that we should take because I don't have anything in front of me when it comes to legal case law to tell me that it would definitely be upheld, what requiring members of the public to wear masks and provide temperature readings before they vote. And the ramifications, if it is not upheld, are severe and they could be, it could be bad for the county and bad for the election. And this is too important of a constitutional right, I think, for us to go off of just what I think could be upheld. So in that vein, I think that my recommendation would be that the commission consider reconsidering the requirement of a mask or temperature reading and turning people away when they come to exercise their constitutional rights.
All right, Mr. Parker, you want to add anything else into that?
It's, you know, of course, currently, the commission has made the decision, you know, as regards this area. If it is changed, it would be, you know, my recommendation or consideration for the commission is if you do allow access without a mask or face covering, that it'd be at a, the service provide at a different location or different area on early voting locations as well as polling locations, you know, whether that be a different room or separate area with, you know, a distance away from, especially at the mall location, I think there could be a distance away from where, you know, it'd be more, you know, less chance of, you know, transmission of any virus or flu symptoms or whatever the case may be. So if there is a change on access to voting locations, in conjunction with that, I would recommend that the service be provided in a different area, a separate and completely different area. Now, it may require more poll workers, as long as the commission's aware of that, you would have to authorize that in conjunction with that.
Right. The other question.
One more question.
Go ahead, David.
Under what part of the code are we required to tell the county clerk on how she is to provide polling places and how they're set up?
I'd have to look at the revised administrative order issued by the Secretary of State's office.
Does the clerk have an answer to that question?
Oh, no.
Does the commission have that right to determine how polls are set up inside the room?
Rachel?
I don't want you to ever second the boundaries either. I mean, I do.
I would have to look into that, too, Mr. Commissioner. I apologize.
I just, I, I-
Well, I don't see the county commission recommending how Mrs. Thomas sets up her polling places.
That's my question, David, why you called the meeting Tuesday?
Meeting Tuesday was to discuss whether or not we were going to do masks and to how we were going to handle people coming in and out of the courthouse. That was when the meeting Tuesday.
How did it get to this?
Previously, the clerk of the county has known that we have an issue. In the last month and a half, nothing has been done by the clerk to separate voters. We brought up last Thursday again to her, by me, during testing how we were going to separate voters who may be sick. And I was told it could not be done and they could come into the building, contaminate the building. That's why I called for the meeting on Tuesday. We were given legal advice at that time. We were to require face masks. But at no point has the clerk of the county prepared for this situation. And if she has, I'm more than happy to give her a chance to explain to this commission and to this county how she did that.
All right.
Susan, will speak?
I don't know, David.
Because this, you and I have discussed this several times and you've always said you had to wait for an answer. Well, we're here today and we still don't have an answer. And it's either the Secretary of State or-
I'm not going to get into an argument about this. I, everybody will have the right to vote. We discuss, I discuss the room downstairs. This, and if, I'm going to back up everybody. This has been the most difficult election so far. Has it been perfect? No. Are we perfect? No. But I have done everything I can think of to do this properly. I, I mean, even if, I can give somebody a space that, I've got it worked out at the mall. If we have to, we will take them around to the back entrance and let them in. Clean that area as well once somebody leaves. So we don't have to bring them in if they, I mean, are we even taking a temperature? How, how am I supposed to determine who goes where? But if I do, if somebody comes in here, you're still making them take a temperature of 100, a temperature of 104? I will find someplace to put these people. I do not want to put anybody in harm's way. That is not my intent at all. Can I make it, make the plan up in an hour's time or two hours' time, probably not even sometimes two days' time? I'm sorry I didn't do it fast enough, Mr. Hinkle.
A month and a half, we've discussed this, Susan. We've discussed it all the time.
Is that all I'm going to say?
It's been discussed in commission meetings. How were we going to handle voting with people that were sick? As of last Thursday, I asked a question of you again and you did not have an answer. So this commissioner, we sit here today and we are no further along than we were a month and a half ago. Let the public end the vote. That's my motion. No requirement. No special rooms, no temperature, no face masks unless they request it.
All right, David, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we do have a motion on the floor. Rachel?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, sure.
As the constitutional officers and the commissioner concerned, within the building, do we have a right to ask you to wear a mask? Not at the mall, not at the polling, within this building, do I as a commissioner have the right to ask people to wear a mask, not to protect themselves, but just protect the other individuals around them? And I don't want to make this personal, but sometimes it is when you work with a few, 100 people in a building. You know, there are people in this building that, three people in this building that I know that are going through or have had chemo. Students who have lupus. Can I as a commissioner take the handcuffs off of anything going on the polling except make it mandatory that our employees have the personal protection they so need and that this courthouse is protected by wearing a mask if you come pay your taxes, if you come to Rocky's department, Mrs. Hester's department, if you come to the sheriff's department, come to your department, come to the courthouse, to the courts, to the magistrate, et cetera. And then, and then let me ask you this because you mentioned being uniformed the other day about making them wear a mask to vote. Or can we exclude votes because it is a constitutional right and I am very conscientious of that as well? But to protect the employees in this building, do we have the right to tell individuals we expect you to wear a mask or we're going to turn you away?
I think we, it's separated out into two different areas. Voting versus basically everything else. You have two different legal standards. You have people exercising their constitutional rights when they are entering the courthouse to vote. That is going to be held to a strict scrutiny standard under federal law. And that's where a case like that would end up. It would be in federal court. That would be the proper venue and jurisdiction for such a case should somebody challenges on that. That is a very heightened and protected right that people have. It is going to be a separate legal standard when you are speaking of requiring commission employees and other constitutional officials' employees to wear a mask during their everyday business operations. It is not going to go to the level of strict scrutiny with a heightened standard. I, I would say that the commission has broad discretion in how they want to handle their employees and members of the public entering the courthouse for everyday business. And it would likely be upheld a lot easier and I would be more comfortable advising you all on, in that type of situation and saying, sure, go ahead and require people to wear masks if that's what the three of you so desire or majority of you so desire. However, I am not comfortable in a legal standpoint advising the commission to require people to wear masks when they vote or turning them away. It's just too important of a right to take that risk and too important of an election. All elections are important, but as we all know, this is a presidential election down the ballot. It's important and I don't think that I would be doing the county a service advising you all on something that I don't know the definite outcome of because it is such a novel territory and the court could go any way that they, that they see fit.
I agree 100%. And just David Ron, just so you notice commissioners, I am for allowing people to come into this building to vote without a mask or with a mask, but I am not for allowing people to come into this building for any other purpose, whether they're employed or a citizen of any property doing this, without the protection of that. And it's not because I want to protect me, it's because I actually do care about you and I care, and I don't want to make you sick. And so I will protect, I will vote no on anything that does not protect our employees and the public when they are in on our property. And she just said we can do that except for voting. That's exactly what she just said. So if you want to vote. If you want to vote, you show, you tell us you want to vote, we're going to take you at your word, go vote, we'll clean the station when you leave, just like Susan has already said she's going to constantly. And then we'll go from there. Go ahead, Rachel.
I was going to say, just so I can interject, it's, even if we do require them in the courthouse, somebody could certainly still challenge it, but the fallout and the ramifications, if the Supreme Court or a court decides that we have taken the wrong action, are not nearly as serious as they are when it comes to voting and an election.
Well, my common sense tells me to protect the people that are employed here and that's exactly what I'm going to vote to do. And at the same time, because of the constitutional ramifications for the freedom to vote, which is very serious to me, as an elected official, of course, if you want to walk in this building and vote, make a check mark and leave, that's within your rights and I will protect those rights as well.
All right, if I might interject, Patsy, I think the motion that David has made, we haven't got a second yet, but what the motion, the motion is, previous action that we have already taken is to now exempt early voting and polling areas from wearing masks. Is that, your motion, David?
The motion is to exempt masks, exempt temperature, and if we're going to take this all away, then I expect, Rachel, do we have exempt the amount of people that are allowed in the facility?
It kind of broke up with Commissioner Hinkle's question. If somebody could repeat that for me.
The question is exempting masks and exempting a temperature reading, but as a follow-up or an add-on to that, is exempting the total number of individuals allowed in the early voting locations or polling locations, basically not following the six-foot distancing recommendation or requirement as outlined in the governor's order and revised order.
I, where we were going to fall into a problem is where we were going to turn people away who refused to vote or who refused to wear a mask. That was where our problem lies. If they have to wait a little bit longer to get into a facility because we're maintaining the six feet of distance, that's not going to be an issue. We're not turning anybody away. We are just saying, your wait may be a little bit longer this year, given what's going on. So if, I don't see, as long as I'm understanding and following the question, a problem with us maintaining the recommended six-foot distance in the polling places, even if the number is minimal, even if like in Susan's voting area, if we can only have two, four people in there voting at a time, I think that that's okay. We're not turning anybody away. Did I, did I follow the question?
Yeah. I amend the fact of the original, no masks, no temperature required to vote.
All right. Do we have a second? Patsy's got a second. Any further discussion? But everything else seems in place.
That's right. None, there's no other change on that form.
Okay.
I'll wait a minute.
No masks for anybody?
Anyone.
Okay.
Totally off.
All right, guys. Rocky, you want to share that with us?
If you're requesting, if you asking people to wear a mask and they're willing to wear the mask and come in and vote, leave it that way. If they don't want to, then-
They don't have to, exactly.
It's optional.
So what about for the employees and the other visitors?
Patsy, what's it like?
Same, we're not, we're only dealing with vote.
Okay.
All right. Okay, Patsy, with the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
It's unanimous. All right, item two on the agenda is confirm or change overall access procedures for June 1st opening of county facilities. Mr. Parker?
Right now, our current procedures for employees, our staff and officials, there's a check-in sheet, we have individual administrative assistants at the tables that will complete those or assist in completing those, check-in forms, there's a temperature reading taken. We're not writing down the temperature now, we're just writing pass, fail, okay, not okay, whatever the notation is, but we're not actually writing the temperature reading. And then they're proceeding on through security as, as normal. For the public, there is a requirement for a mask and a requirement for a temperature reading. We're not recording that temperature reading. We're not asking the public any questions as it relates to that check-in form. There's no form for them to complete. The only thing for the public is a mask and temperature reading that is taken and then they proceed into the courthouse or county-owned facilities. As with, relates to numbers, we've restricted the numbers in the courthouse to 35 for non-court, non-court related activities. The presiding judge is managing the hearings and individuals in their individual court areas. For the annex, it's, the current procedure is four, a total of four people maximum in the early voting location, maintaining the six-foot distance requirements. That's the reason for the max there. But now, based on this recent action, there will be no mask required, it'll be optional, and no temperature reading for public that are going to the early vote locations in the courthouse or the mall facility.
Also for polling.
Polling locations also, Election Day. But that's, as I understand, our current procedure, our procedures, that'll be, in effect, Monday when we open, June the 1st.
All right, what's the pleasure of the commission? And again, anything that we have voted to approve, you can always bring it back up on the table to reconsider.
I'd like to find a way to separate our employees from voters.
Okay. That's your call, Susan's call or our call?
Our call.
On access or?
Access in and out of courthouse during early voting.
Is that, what about polling places today?
Not just courthouse, early voting, that way, our employees are not mixed in with people that don't want to wear a mask.
Oh, okay. Got a, got a solution or just a question?
I'm just, that's a direction to our staff, find another way to wear our mask.
Could that be an administrative function?
The employees would need to enter, just off the top of my head, I would have the employee through the front door of the courthouse and early voting would enter the Third Street exit, everybody else would come through the third-
What, they're going now, isn't it?
No, some employees are coming in in the morning before the public, but-
I'm talking about the voters, though.
The voters are coming in Third Street. Yeah, that's what I'm getting ready to say, is after 9:30, the Third Street entrance would be only-
For voters.
Voters. We would have to tell, you know, magistrate court, they would have to come through the front door. Family court, they would have to come through the front door. Right now, that's not the process. It's a matter of whether you want just voters coming in that Third Street or the other public, or do we just want to separate our employees? If it's just employees, we can direct them just to use the front door of the courthouse and we could still use the public for family court, magistrate court voting on the Third Street side. So just the employees? Okay, that's, that would be easier.
All right. So David, you want to put that in form of a motion? Can you read that again?
Well, I think administratively, we could probably handle that administratively. I would, I would, if it's agreeable with the commission, what I would do is I would send out an email to, to all of our employees, all constitutional offices, all state officials, that after 9:30, the Third Street entrance is only to be used by the public after 9:30 during business hours. So the Third Street would be for voting, magistrate court, family court, service of process, other facilities in that, you know, building.
All right, Chief Miller?
The problem that I see is all the law enforcement now is just getting tradition into coming through the Third Street door with all the, everything, the magistrate court, everything to the courthouse. And then now we're going to put an hour, hour thing on it. You've got police officers coming and going 24/7, different times. It's going to be, in my opinion, it's going to be very hard to decipher. I mean, you can't come at 9:30, but you can come at 10:30 or you can come at 8:30. And then the other problem that I see is we have been instructed all along to keep people from coming from the courthouse into the annex and the annex into the courthouse. So now-
That hasn't changed. The only thing that's changing is staff and officials, after 9:30, the Third Street entrance will only be for the public. Everybody else, staff, officials, employees, will enter the front door of the courthouse after 9:30 if they're going to the annex. The public wouldn't, that's going to magistrate court or family court, would not come through the front door of the courthouse. They would still enter. The only difference is staff, officials, and employees after 9:30 would come through the front door.
So all police officers having functions over there will come through the front door?
No, they still come through the Third Street door.
Even after 9:30? That's what Rick's question is, from 9:30 on, yeah?
They're not our employees, unless they're the sheriff.
Yes.
They're not our employees.
That's not true. Still unemployed.
No, I'm talking about city patrolmen, state police. They could or couldn't, I mean, that's a decision to be made, I hadn't-
So it's not deputies? Deputies would come through?
Deputies, if you, if, based on what I would send out, would come through the front door. That's the ones we have control and are telling the workers of.
So many times, you have a state trooper, a deputy, and a Clarkburg police, and all coming in at the same time. I mean, we'll do it however you say to do it.
Sounds like they come through the Third Street. They're just like, they're not our employees. State trooper in, nor is Clarkburg PD or state police.
They just pick one out of the three and tell them, you gotta go that one, the other one.
Only the deputy. That's what I understand.
Either that or exempt law enforcement from that consideration.
I'd like, I'd like to see, though, the law enforcement, I mean, everybody here now knows how it's been a hard adjustment to get the different agencies to coincide with the rules that we need to put in place for safety and everything. It would be a lot easier if you would exempt the law enforcement part of it, I think, but it's whatever you decide as far as the change, so.
All right. So we, David, still being administrative?
Yep. Yep.
And right here, nobody's voting. Like, Mark, what are you doing?
Well, is that all right?
Yeah, I don't, I could, yeah, just administratively, we can handle that.
Okay.
You know, we're talking non-law enforcement employees.
Right. All right. Anything else? Patsy?
Because after the employees have already checked in, they can enter the front door of the courthouse without checking in. Again, it's just a matter of-
Right.
-a few extra steps possibly.
All right.
So we're saying that the employees will still be required to wear a face mask, temperature-
Complete the form.
Sign the sheet and sign the sheet.
Yes. Employees, which, unless there's a change, the current procedure is employees fill out the check-in form, answer the questions, yes or no, or is a temperature reading. Our original plan just said there'd be a temperature reading. It didn't say we would record the number. We can record pass or fail, okay or not okay, still be in compliance with our original overall plan and staff, officials, and employees would continue to follow that procedure. The one change that was made for the public at the last, one of our last meetings, was that the public would be required, this is not talking about voting, we're, this is separate from voting, would be required to wear a mask, have a temperature reading. It's not recorded, they're not asked any questions, they're not required to fill out any forms. They just have a temperature reading, have a mask on, proceed into the building under the six-foot distancing requirements and 35 at a max at a time for non-court related functions.
What would we be in a pass to change?
Uh, there, my recommendation would be not to change anything at this point. That's my recommendation, is to leave that as is. Yeah.
All right. Motion, sir?
Clear as mud for you, Susan.